All right, welcome to the October 6, 2014 Towne of Litchfield's Board of Selectmen Meeting. We'll start by, I pledge allegiance, all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board is just coming out of the paperwork review session. First up is a review of items for consent. In the consent folder for today, we have the minutes from September 22nd. We have accounts payable manifests for $138.64, a payroll manifest of $46,046.53, the town administrator's contract renewal, land use change tax warrant, map 10 lots 77-6 and 77-7, intent to cut map 6, map, sorry, map 5 lot 195, map 1 lots 20 and 31, and then the avatar valuation update contract. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the items for consent.
Okay, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 4-0-0. And I should probably just a front, just for notice, Selectmen Lemire has been excused with another prior engagement, so he won't be here this evening. Request for items for other business. Any other business want to add to the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, we'll follow the agenda. Next up is a ministry report, new business, solid waste facility baler failure.
Yes. Yeah, harder to say than you'd think, so I got back after a few days away and Dave came in and told me that the oldest baler, solid waste facility is broken, one of the vertical tracks is worn away, over time that door's bent, most recently is that door is sliding down, it sheared off some more bolts, and what was more of a concern to him was the motor started smoking and making some unusual noises. Dave took it out of service last week. This was purchased in 2008 and was purchased used at that point, used for plastics, which is probably one of the most demanding baled recyclables we do. We've known this machine's been on its last legs, and we've been trying to carry it as long as we could. This was one of the reasons I recommended the Equipment Capital Reserve Fund for Solid Waste several years ago, so if a baler failed, we could be able to replace it, since we can't go long periods of time without all three balers. When we had the preventive maintenance work done in July, the company advised us the machine was on its way out, and so again, our theory had been the longer we could baby it along, the better. We weren't, you know, going to replace it just to replace it. We've looked at few alternatives, both used and new machines. New machine delivered installed, it's going to be approximately $13,000. We'd expect a used machine to be in the $5,000 to $7,000 range. Two ways to look at this, we purchase new equipment with the co-op, they could provide us interest-free financing for three years with repayment coming from proceeds of the sale of recyclables. Interesting idea, they're looking to start this type of program. The alternative way is we can pay for it through the Capital Reserve Fund that was explicitly created for this type of purpose. There's a possibility the new purchase might be eligible for another New Hampshire, the beautiful grant, but I'm not counting that in any of those plans. Just their timetable is, it wraps around calendar year, so I can't really count on that. You know, we just, we got one earlier this year to offset the Skidsteer, so I guess basically what I'm looking at is whether there's any strong preference over new versus used, and potentially on financing. I'll tell you, the more I've thought about it, the more I'm inclined to lean the Capital Reserve route. Why? Money is there and was set aside for that purpose. I'm a little wary of the, the agreement with the co-op is kind of like a lease, but not a lease, because it's coming out of deferred revenue, and the amount of headaches that will likely ensue from figuring out how to manage that contract will offset whatever saving, interest savings I might get, because it's not straightforward. So that's why I'm a little wary to go that route.
Are we gonna get anything for the other machine that's, or no?
Uh, yeah, not, not much. Yeah, I mean, it's basically on, on the quote I have, it's like, it's under $1,000. So it, it more or less, the trade value for the old machine washes the setup and install of getting, of the new machine cost.
Do you have any leads on used?
Uh, we have a couple leads, they're not, I don't have final numbers on them yet. Dave's been, been chasing them. This, this sort of all came up quickly last week, so again, you know, the expectation is that sort of $5,000 to $7,000 price range.
With the new machine, any warranties should come with it?
Um, probably. Hold on a sec. See if it actually says on this one.
Isn't the one we got from the grant last time?
What?
The one we had.
The one we got last time was a, it was a PTR vertical downstroke baler, so.
That was brand new.
And that was brand new. The information I have right here doesn't tell me one way or the other, so I can't.
I think if I remember the one we had, it had like a year, but, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't remember either.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, for, for what it's worth, when we set up that fund, I, my mental benchmark for, you know, what it was, you know, you can take it with a grain of salt, was what if it was two new balers at 12, 5, which is how, that's where the $25,000 in my mind came from, so.
So here's my question. Five to seven grand for a used one, that's a number you just throw out there. Okay, this baler is not super old, it's about six years old.
Used, it came to us used, okay.
Okay, that, that helps a lot, because I was gonna say, five to $7,000, how old is this thing gonna be? How used was the other one we got it? Any idea?
In 2007, I think we were just doing the cutover, right, so?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
All right, so now the next question comes.
I wish we firmed, I think when it came in, it looked like it was fairly new, I mean.
Probably a few years old. So if this is one of the most used balers, right, are there different grades that you can buy, like a heavy duty?
Not.
Something with a little more piston power?
There's, there's a little bit of difference between the, the two of these. I have two quotes right now. They're basically gonna be about the same, though, 10 horsepower, not, not wildly different. The, the leap is when you go from a vertical baler to a horizontal baler, and go from 12,000 to 13,000, to 40,000 to 45,000, and get a much larger piece of equipment.
Is that feasible in that facility?
Um, possibly, with some reason. We haven't even, we haven't really thought about making the leap to that. You've been able to serve what you need with the three vertical balers, so, you know, better to replace a vertical baler at 13,000 than spring for the $40,000 horizontal baler.
Well, I pretty much figured that was gonna be your answer, but the reason I asked the question is maybe it's something to plan for. If they have a longer lifespan, if they're less labor intensive, because you're just dumping the stuff in there, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because I don't think it's probably gonna be suitable. It would have to be like the compacters, it'd have to cut a hole in the wall and have it out back or something. But it's an idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think, my sense is there'd be enough space in there for them. I, I used to have two horizontal balers in the facility in Littleton, no verticals, so, and it was fine, except they're big-ticket items. And what's worse is that when they fail, they're big-ticket items.
Yeah, but they're much, they're duty cycle, less labor-intensive to use and operate.
Yeah.
So.
So, the request of the board is to authorize the replacement, used, you want direction?
I'm, ideally, I'm getting, if you, I would like to be able to leave here, if you have a strong preference of used or new, and the auth, and the authorization for Dave and I to proceed to find the best value for the town within that parameter of used or new, and an understanding of how you would prefer to pay, pay for it. Do you want me to explore further this financing with the co-op, or would you like to use the Capital Reserve, with the understanding that once we have final numbers, you will make the formal motion to withdraw the exact amount from the Capital Reserve?
Do you know what the life expectancy is, if we were to go new?
That was my next question.
Um, no one will ever quote you a life expectancy. I'd figure about 10 years.
So 10, so we got this one back in 2008?
You got it in eight, you know, probably a couple years of life on it, so we're right in that, we're, we're right in that timeframe.
My preference would be new, but it's something we use every day, so why would we go for another used?
I happened to see the machine, because I was down there, it's in pretty rough shape.
Yeah.
And I just, I point out, the last one we bought was new.
Right. Well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the procurement of a new baler not to receive 13, well, not to receive $13,000, and we'll determine the payment method once we figure out what we're, what the actual unit will be and the cost.
Oh, second.
Motion made in second, this, further discussion?
We gonna put this out to bid at all?
We're collecting some bids right now.
At the next meeting, you'll have a final decision unit, hopefully.
I'll tell you what we've decided to do.
Right.
And it will be in motion, because most likely it'll be a three to four week turnaround to get something here.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is how long is this thing gonna take? With, with the motion we have on the table, does that give you authority to actually make that purchase?
That's.
That's my intent.
If that's the intent, that's what, that's what I'm looking for, I'm looking for the...
Just the method of paying for it isn't clear, whether it comes out of the fund or not. If there's no, if there's no clarity as to how this is being paid for, how can they purchase it?
We can amend it and say, can, my preference is come out of the fund, that's, it makes it cleaner, we don't have to worry about leases, don't worry about revenue changes or any of that kind of thing. I mean, I'll amend my own motion, and I'd say come from the fund, if that's what you want to do.
I'll make an amendment to the motion to come from the Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion on the amendment. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, amendment passes 4-0-0. Now back to the amended motion. Any further Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 4-0-0. All right, next.
Property auction, property at 17 Corning Road sold for $187,500 at auction. The, there were over 100 attendees there, this was the largest attendance that Sullivan and Sullivan have had in New Hampshire. We were really pleased working with the company, and, that's my note, here to say, hopefully we're not in this situation again, but if we are, certainly would not hesitate to go with them. Very pleased in the lead-up, as you know, I was not available that day. Terry Brienne sort of stood in for me, because she and I had been working with, with the company through the process, and she was extremely positive about how things worked on-site that day. Right now, working with counsel on closing, should be within 30 days from auction. You've had in your signature folder the quick claim deed. The other thing that I am going to need is the authority to execute any other necessary documents related to the transaction. There's one, the CD 57S, for instance, which is a DRA tax form, and it would just be easier for me to get it settled than to have to chase everyone down sometime in the next month. So I will be looking for that authorization, then just sort of by way of wrapping this up, once it's all completed, we'll finalize the tally of interest taxes, penalties, carrying charges, clear those accounts on our books, and send the balance to the previous owners. So, all of that should be wrapped up easily before year-end.
Okay. So you need a motion from the board?
Yes.
I make a motion that we authorize Town Administrator Jason Hope to execute on all paperwork and activities around the sale of 17 Corning Road. Does that make sense?
That's fine, yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 4-0-0.
All right. Next is just short and sweet, a reminder that this document exists, that, and this is really my intention for our next meeting, is to begin, getting that list together of warrant articles, particularly those that we see having an appropriation attached, because I want to get all of us on board with those, understand what those numbers are, so we can hand those off to the Budget Committee, and then move on to the non-financial impact articles after that. So this is kind of my placeholder right now, I've had a little bit of input from individual board members, or things that have bubbled up through the rest of our conversation so far. You know, I apologize right now, they're kind of one-liners, they're not really real numbers yet, and, you know, as things come up, or I'd be looking to you guys as well, if there are things that you feel we should have on that list for appropriation articles that maybe we even talked about, feel free to add them on to that list directly, or send me a note, and then we can kind of flesh them out for conversation at the next meeting.
What date, what was the date we were targeting to be done with all the appropriation ones to give to the Budget Committee?
Articles are, want to say like mid, mid to late November, I think. There, we've pushed them out later.
I can probably, uh...
Frank, you remember, when we targeted the warrants to go to them?
No.
Well, all of our activities should be done before then, so we should know what ones we're recommending.
Yeah.
Obviously, things may fall out from the Budget Committee perspective, they have to go to warrant potentially, but then at that point.
You know, just, just so we don't get ourselves bogged down further, we're slated to present the financial impact warrant articles by, on December 11th.
December 11th?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, we, we wrap up the rest of our presentations November 13th. When, when I set the schedule up, I built in, I built in a bigger chunk of time, because traditionally we've spent longer going through warrant articles. There is no penalty for finishing them sooner rather than later.
No, I, we should, you said 27, we'll discuss them on 27.
Yeah.
Assuming there are more than what you already have.
Yep, I assume there may be a few more than I have on that list, so.
Okay.
And I also am not expecting that we're going to have everything discussed, resolved, and on-board on the 27th. I just want to make sure that we have that, kind of that first discussion, everybody knows what is potentially on the list, and then we can keep refining that list.
Okay. Anything else on warrant articles?
That's all I have.
All right, you have other items?
Only other reminder is that at our next meeting, we'll be discussing and accepting and appropriating the various bits of unanticipated revenue that have come in through the year. We have sufficient time now for me to get the notice in the paper and jump through all those hoops, so, since, you know, we're meeting again on your normal schedule, the 27th, so.
Three weeks, right?
Yeah, so.
I guess the board's not sure, is aware that the chief's car died, would you like to share that?
Um, yeah, chief's car died on the way into work today, most likely just alternator, so we'll...
Hopefully it's bad all the time.
Wait and see, but, not a week.
If you got a Ford.
Yeah, not a, not a day goes, not a week goes by without another, without another one seeming to bubble up, so.
Kevin, wouldn't it be wrong to start putting town veh, town police and everything in like Hondas and stuff? Wouldn't that be wrong?
If they only made a cruiser package.
Yeah, they run forever, don't they? Gone would be the argument of 100,000 miles, right?
Yeah, that's cool. All right. Anybody have any other questions about anything else I've posted under the other items, or newsletters, notes?
Just trying to timing, got five minutes before.
Well, why, I would suggest that maybe we go the public input route, and that before you dive into budget, rather than interrupting the budget.
Or better yet, Mr. Chairman, perhaps we go to selectmen reports and other stuff.
That's what I was gonna, oh, we'll go back to that. Selectmen reports, anybody have anything to report? Mr. Perry?
Um, I did bring back to the Rec Commission, the, basically the selectmen saying that they were fully behind them into whatever had to be done. They did talk about the possibility of maybe wanting to get cameras in there, even if it was up at the tennis court. They, there's an issue of power to try to get cameras all the way down by the circle. They were happy to hear about getting the signage put in permanently.
Yeah.
So then at that point, it would make it more difficult, and they hope that the bike rack is gonna be included in that as well. Hopefully, they have some equipment down there when they do the signs, that they can do the bike rack as well. Right now, it's only got about 12 inches of concrete on both sides, about eight inches round. So something that would be a little bit more permanent would be nice.
Okay, anything else? That's about it. Mr. Byron?
Um, there was a Budget Committee meeting on the 25th of September, and basically, at that Budget Committee meeting, one of the things that came up was the reopening of the budget at year-end to reconsider items. As the selectmen had done in the past, we had taken items that were part of the budget, that we had excess funds or additional funds left over from the current year, and applied those to the future year to take them off the budget, drop the tax rate. Budget Committee has stated that they do not want to open, or reopen the budget at year-end to reconsider those items, so, just to make you aware of that.
What's the justification for that, though?
Apparently, it causes confusion amongst the Budget Committee, and they feel that they have to revote the items, so.
Are you saying if we have money left at the end of the year, they don't want us to prepay for stuff from next year?
Well, it sounds like we can, we just don't want to change the budget, though.
They, they don't want to change the budget, right.
So that means we'd have more money, which is awesome.
And the, and the argument is that we can apply that money if we wanted to, towards
deferring the costs of the subsequent year's budget, by putting that as a, an appropriation or a cess, not an appropriation, but a dedication at the tax rate setting time.
Right, except we still have to raise it, though.
No, you take it out of the general fund.
Well, it's, right, no, I'm saying, we already do that now, we do $200,000 a year already.
You can, what they're saying is you basically add the additional leftover if you wanted to do that at the, that time. On the 30th, there was a Budget Committee meeting as well, this was a special Budget Committee meeting, Mr. Cordell Johnson presented the, or provided training to the Budget Committee on the duties and responsibilities of the Budget Committee, and basically, he described how the two boards work together, and how they function jointly, and what their responsibilities are. Pretty much, everything was stated there that was, been stated previously to this board, so there was no new information, but it went well, and there were several questions asked, that type of thing. So, that's about it. I don't think there's anything else.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you. I attended the, I was actually late to the Conservation Committee meeting, but I did attend a lot of part of it. The issue around their, the legal fees from the sale, they've asked for the budget, the Board of Selectmen to consider paying that out of our direct legal fees and not taking it out of the Conservation Fund. I tell them I'd bring that forward. Eight hundred dollars.
How much?
It's eight hundred and twelve dollars.
It's about $800, I think.
Yeah. To me, to me, my thought around that, and I didn't have an opportunity to time to even think, think about it, but to me, that's the cost of selling the house, is what came out of the sale of the house. I mean, I'm sorry, confused myself, right? It's, it's about selling and buying that land, that should be factored into the cost, so I don't see any issue why we shouldn't take it out, but it is only a year bucks, and I'm not sure I want to get in a battle. I don't want, I don't think it's an issue either way. But I'm just, I'm bringing it forward to have the board decide whether they want to do anything different, or leave it the way it is.
My opinion is leave it the way it is. I mean, that's the cost of purchasing property, and when you have a Conservation Commission Fund for the purchase of property, that should be included in it. I don't, I don't, I don't see the need to separate that out and do that as a separate expense that would get billed back to the town's attorney's budget line. Doesn't make sense to me.
I couldn't agree with Frank more.
Okay. I'll pass that along. Leave it the way it is and just withdraw from that fund. Now, do they have to authorize a withdrawal from that fund, or do we?
They do.
Okay.
They do. So, so ultimately, you could still get into this delightful procedural catch-22 if they don't authorize it.
But, but a warrant was passed last year that allows us to take that.
It does, yeah, I know, well...
We'll get into that in a couple minutes, when we talk about the 2015 budget.
Okay. I, I'll just make another quick note, the, the Capital Improvement Committee met again, actually just last Thursday, and we're working on making some recommendations to come forward at this point. We've, this would be our, really, that was our first official meeting, as, when we booked everybody up. Hopefully, the schedule will get more solidified and actually be in the format where we can actually record and do all this stuff, but we're still in the kind of discovery and understanding what our roles are, and what we already have for work product that we've already worked on, so, otherwise.
I think it's good to note that one of the things the committee is starting with, is starting to go out and look and see some of the things we have. So their first meeting in November, they'll be, we will be at the solid waste facility in the Highway Department. So we're not just sitting here looking at charts, talking about trucks and balers, but make sure everybody can see and understand what it is we're talking about before we start making plans.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you remember when we first started talking about where we were with the committee, we showed the stuff that Jason had done prior to the committee being established, which has a pretty good layout of our assets, sort of the lifecycle, when they're sort of tagged to be replaced or should be considered replacement. So that's sort of the initial we're starting, and now, the committee wants to understand what these things are, and understand what their role in the departments are, so we'll go out, they'll go out on some, you know, fact-finding kind of details and come forward that, so. So prior to our warrant setting, I think there's a, they will probably come forward requesting a warrant for some kind of Capital Reserve Fund, that would help start dealing with this, because look out five years, it's many millions of dollars of stuff that has to get taken care of, and there's no way we can do it any other way, so.
Just, if you don't mind, a second, a backtrack on the Budget Committee stuff.
Yep.
Today, I received a note from the Chairman of the Budget Committee, asking about tours for school and town facilities. Now, of course, we don't do schools, but town facilities and departments, especially if there's going to be requests for items that will impact the respective budgets. I'm not sure what that means, but it says, this was offered by the town a few years ago, either one or, or one-on-one, or in small groups, depending on the schedule. I sent that to Jason so that he can address that. I'm not sure what you want to do, so I guess the question is, are you gonna contact the Chairman of the Budget Committee?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to the Chairman, set up, I, try to figure out what it, what, we're not, to my view, there's nothing large, dramatic, new being... to my view, there's nothing large, dramatic, new being proposed in this budget, but, um.
Well, whatever's gonna facilitate them.
But whatever helps the committee under, better understand our needs, I'm happy to show them, because that's.
Yeah, there's never been any issues in the past, so I don't, it's not necessarily a big deal.
Yeah, it'll just be kind of gauging people's availability, who's interested and, you know, whether they get me presenting it or they actually get the department head who might know something.
Okay, there was also an email that I received under separate letterhead from, um, the chairman of the budget committee. It was apparently, uh, questions from a member, uh, asking about the work done on, uh, last year's warrant articles. One of them was a reference to Article 11 about the old town hall being repainted. And, um, I responded, I responded back that yes, the old town hall was repainted, the project's complete. Second question was on Article 12. To, uh, have the roof of town hall replaced and I responded back that it has not as of yet happened, quotes are being collected and anticipates that will be in the next three weeks. Article 19, road study for Route 102 intersection. I responded that there was a feasibility study done and that this is accepted by the board of selectmen and will result in a follow-up warrant article determined as eyes of the citizens. Article 22, with regards to the road agent position, this is, um, what is, what are the board of selectmen's intentions going into the 15 annual meeting? I said there's no change in the intentions of the selectmen, that the position will be appointed in time for the person to assume their duties, uh, per the citizens' direction this March. And Article 18 was the conservation fund asking was Darrell treated this year and the answer was yes. Um, the pond was treated to eliminate mill foil, it'll be an ongoing situation.
Only a quarter of it was done, a third isn't like that. And that's a budget committee member asking those questions?
Yep.
Cool. Anything else on selectmen reports? There are none. I'll open the floor for public input, is there someone from the public like to speak?
Good evening.
Hi Chris.
I'm Chris. Colonial. Uh, first, um, thing I wanna speak about, the four of you really have nothing to do with it, but I, I just wanna express disappointment that Mr. Lemire misses most of the meetings here. It's much more than 50%, and, and I think that's wrong. Uh, he was just, uh, elected to another term. And I have to get that point out to him because he owes it to the people of this town to be present at these meetings. Uh, next, um, Mr. Brunel, you mentioned the capital, uh, committee, I, I noticed it wasn't being recorded, I couldn't see it. Is, will the next one be recorded?
It's the plan, yeah, the first meeting we had, the recorder was broken, so we wouldn't go live, couldn't go live, couldn't do that.
Okay.
But we weren't in a sales at that point, we're just looking at members who are interested. Second meeting, which was happened last Thursday, this room was already booked with the conservation committee. We did in the back room, we have minutes, it'll be published when we approve them like we do.
So I guess now moving forward, they'll be scheduled in, in a way where they could be recorded.
Yeah, we've just been trying to find a, a time slot that doesn't conflict the other rooms.
Thank you, third, um, I'll buzz right through some of these. Um, cable committee, uh, how do we get them to record their meetings? Kinda ironic, the people that are in charge of the cameras don't turn them on during their own meetings.
They would have to, well, that's a good question, I think they're, they're supposed to be recording their meetings. So we, let's send a note to the chair.
Can we get that word out to them, please?
Suggest they change their meeting location to someplace where they can record.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'm not even sure how regularly they actually meet, that's the other thing, so we should get that clarified.
You guys, um, I think it was last meeting and a meeting before, we was talking about the, um, Mr. Brunel and the IT, as, as doubles as the IT person here. I truly understand part of the logic there, it's a cost savings. Truly, just like you guys spoke about, appreciate all the hard work he does. I know it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, it's a big job. But I, I, I would like you guys to just discuss that a little bit more. You know, he, it's, he's a, he's an elected board of selectmen, he's a citizen of this town. But he also has the passwords to all the computers, the criminal and personal records, the whole police department. I, I do see a problem with that and others do, and now most people, as usual, they won't come up here and talk about it. Um, personally, Mr. Brunel's a great guy, but the point is, we, we have to have some separation and I think it's important. Um, I know you're talking about phasing in some money. Ultimately, we're gonna have to, I, I think the time should be now. Uh, the school has an IT guy, I think it's a salary of sixty-something thousand dollars, he handles hundreds and hundreds of, I'm guessing hundreds of computers and different ports, the town is a fraction of that. I don't know if we could do something with the school's IT guy, uh, or just have, or sub it out to a private contractor, but I think it's worth the discussion sooner rather than later, and this has no reflection on Mr. Brunel personally, I just wanna make that clear. I think it's more of positional. Uh, the last issue, uh, during the meeting of August 11th, and I've taken some notes, I'm gonna read and, and, um, also discuss it on the fly. Something that I, that, that I have a concern about, um, our town administrator said that he and the road agent have been discussing moving away from that model. And the model he was referring to was the way we handle snow plowing here in Litchfield. We currently utilize mostly private contractors with their own vehicles, but the town of Litchfield supplies, installs and maintains the plows and sanders. It's a system that's worked well for years. And of course we cycle through contractors from time to time, uh, but the system has worked. Now, if the road agent or the town administrator or even the five of you, or four of you in this case, wanted to move away from that model, I believe it's certainly worthy of a discussion. The discussion should begin with the department heads, of course the town administrator, you guys. It should move on to the budget committee 'cause there is a financial impact. And then ultimately the voters, because it is a change of model, this is a big deal. You could minimize it by saying we're just gonna redirect a few thousand dollars from the repair line of the budget, but remember that repair line, you guys asked for that money to repair and maintain vehicles and equipment. The budget committee recommended it for that purpose, the voters voted on it for that purpose. You are now redirecting it to purchase something and even above that to change the model of what we're currently doing. I don't think it should be done that way. And especially that is, what you're purchasing is a depreciating asset. The bigger issue is, this is how town governments continue to get bigger and bigger, it's the creep, it's the incrementalism that leads to more government employees, more costly depreciating assets and higher taxes. It takes a few years, but it's slow and once you get there, you can't turn back, which is okay, if that's what the voters want, but you're not giving them a choice. You know, it starts slowly, a few years ago, we were asked to change the, uh, purchasing plan, the way we had it, which gave, which kinda handcuffed you guys a little bit, and, but those handcuffs are off now. Uh, which helps allow for something like this. The plowing contractors, I understand it's a few thousand dollars if they bail. But you can find other contractors, they are out there, and that keeps with the same model. It's easy to use that excuse, or it's hard to find somebody to go ahead and change the model. But that means you're also choosing to increase the size and scope of the government as well as the taxes that we're paying well into the future. Now, the prediction, what's gonna happen? You bought a used truck with 125,000 miles on it, it's used only during the winter, it was clearly said here, it's gonna sit all summer, three seasons, it's just gonna sit. What happens when vehicles sit? They rust, tires dry rot, it's no good for it. We're increasing the fleet that we own in this town. Ultimately, what is that gonna mean? We're gonna need another garage to park them all, to keep them out of the weather. At some point, you might come forward and say, now we need a mechanic, 'cause it will be cheaper to maintain our own trucks, 'cause we have so many. And of course, now with all of that, next thing you're gonna ask is gonna need a full-time road agent, because a part-time road agent can't handle a huge flute. That is the incrementalism that ultimately happens in government. And it's okay, if that's what the people want.
Your five minutes are just about up.
Okay, thank you.
One more topic and we'll.
I, I, I'm just keeping on the same topic, I'm not gonna go to the other one.
Okay.
Uh, also ultimately, that truck's not gonna last very long, so you're gonna go to the voters or the budget committee and say, we're gonna need a new truck. The rationale's gonna be, well, we own the asset, so we have to replace it. That's usually the rationale, and I agree, if you own an asset, you should replace it. But remember, nobody wanted in this town, that, that asset, it was only you guys. And also, the last point I'm gonna say on this, is we heard that we could save money, we could only pay $20 an hour instead of 70. I'd love to have that discussion, but I could tell you there is no way increasing the size of government will ever save money, it's always less expensive to subcontract out as much as possible. So please, if you wanna change the model, please, uh, do it through the appropriate channels and not just take the action to yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett?
Good evening. Jason Greta Levin, Perry Court. Ju- ju- just a quick comment on what Mr. Pescucci said, I happen to agree with him, but, uh, in business, we don't, we don't take into, uh, what our, a corporation doesn't internalize those things that they don't do. In other words, when I was in, in the paper business, we made paper. We didn't take in-house those things that weren't related to making paper, you outsourced that, because you're not the expert. So i- in this case, I, I happen to agree, plowing, you outsource that to people that plow and it's always cheaper. Uh, when you bring in more and more and more and more, it just, it gets fat and bloated, and we can talk about that forever, but that's what government is. Uh, just a couple of quick points, um. Uh, one, do we, are there any open 91A requests in, for the town?
One we just closed?
No, I don't think so.
No open ones?
Not that I'm aware of.
Unless you're aware of one.
No, no, I was just curious. And secondly, oh man, I just lost it there. Um. Gee whiz. I'm sorry, I just totally went blank on that, I had a second one. Which was nice and easy. So be it, I'll email it to you, thank you.
Have a good day. Any other public input? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public input. Next on the topic, let's see, 2015 budget review.
Yep. Um, let's, what we had discussed was sort of the high, high point conversations we had last time on the new items, so I baked those into an overall budget here. Um, the summary statement here is that revenues are basically flat. The mathematical default budget is $5,135,609. Proposed budget, $5,241,054. Uh, 2014 default was $5,7,408. Recall though, that an additional $240,514 was raised by warrant article, including $44,562 for the police contract. So, you know, you should at least, when you try to compare, at least bake in the police contract as you're trying to compare apples to apples. I'm not crazy enough to try to peddle to you, oh, but there was another $240,000 raised in warrant articles. I know 170 of that was roads, and so that's not fair to count, because that's not an apples to apples. Um, that said, the difference that we have right now between 2015 proposed and the mathematical default is $105,445. About 2%.
In the negative?
What?
Positive, okay.
A positive, positive. Um, my thought on this, and feel free to suggest something else, is I've shared first here, a list of notes where basically I have kind of the couple bullet points, like a few bullet points for each department that comprise the budget, so sort of the talking points for all of those. Um, my thought is, if I go through tho- those, that'll give me a hit on that department. If you have a question on those departments, that would be a vi- a good time to ask that question. Uh, and then once we get through all those, if you have any changes, we'll make them along, along the way. And then maybe at the end, we look big picture at everything and decide what the board's preference is, that way it gives you a chance to hit every department.
Mr. Chairman, I, I only have three items that I wanna discuss at all on this whole budget.
Is there any particular department or just?
No, they're actually, um, three separate departments.
All right, the, the other reason I guess that I would suggest that maybe we go through the brief exercise going by it through department, even if you guys don't have any questions, is for the benefit of the public to know that we've at least looked at each department.
Well, I think we've all looked at the departments, but.
Right, I mean, but just to kind of give the public kind of a quick, couple of quick headlines, I'll go quickly through them then and you just flag me on your departments you have an issue.
Okay.
If that's.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean.
Um, revenues. We, notable issues in revenues, reduced land use change tax, declining interest and penalties on unpaid taxes.
Just, uh, hang on a second.
Yep.
I understand that under the definition of budget includes revenues. But usually we vote revenue as a separate item.
Mm-hmm.
And it usually takes one meeting to do that.
Yep.
I'm just looking at expenditures, appropriations, if, if you just wanna, I, I don't know, I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Chairman, obviously. But I'm just happy, just looking at appropriations and we can do the revenue.
We can do revenue next meeting, that's fine. I, no, I, I was done it, so I figured.
The budget committee's gonna do appropriations. And I'm sure they historically haven't desired to look at revenues.
But they do wanna know it, they.
They do wanna know it, but so be it.
So why don't we just start at the top of the list and just work right down?
Okay.
You have, you, you, we've talked about some of the highlights before.
Yep.
Executive, is there anything we want?
Yeah, well, let me just blow through these, you know, but there's like a couple bullet points here. Executive, um, the notable changes, my contract, um, and restores the board of selectmen stipend that was deferred in the default budget. Town meeting adjusted for fewer elections. Town clerk moved mileage to accounting budget, we removed the artificial division between clerk, clerk and collector. Practically deposits are a delegated function from the treasurer, which is in accounting. Accounting budget reflects movement through the old wage plan and the moved mileage from clerk and collector.
That would go, we don't.
Okay, that's what I quit by.
And I would open it up separately, so it's.
Uh.
Look on the link and.
Information technology, centralizes all shared voice and data services, the stipend for the IT manager. Uh, systems maintenance, uh, we're starting to see some of those hit the budget there due to the original timing of installs, in some cases no charge in 14. The copier and printer upgrades, discussed at our last meeting. And we removed the lease of the copier, printer and town hall, we now own the equipment. Tax, moved mileage to accounting. Assessing includes the charge for the 2015 revaluation, uh, total cost of that's $95,000. The incremental savings over the previous four years is slightly less than anticipated for the level funding we strive for for, uh, four years ago. Legal budget unchanged. Personnel administration, no return of health, uh, surplus, uh, those have really bailed us out the past two years. New Hampshire retirement, uh, system rate increase July 1st. Uh, social security, Medicare, retirement are all adjusted based on projected contracted wages. Um, we are not expecting in excess workers' compensation premium holiday. So that bumps, I think, another $13,000 back into the budget. Planning is flat, zoning board of adjustment unchanged. General government buildings, returns two weeks of prison work program. Increased propane cost based on our 2014 experience. Cemeteries unchanged, other insurance reflects a 5% increase. It may still change slightly based on experience rating, final rates have not been set by property liability trust yet. Uh, advertising regional associations, flat. Police, uh, captain promotion wage adjustment. Uh, for officers, we filled a vacancy, we have impact of a union contract. We have one officer advancing to corporal based on longevity. We have education stipend payments per contract and shift differential increase per contract. We reduced some of the hours for special officers. Overtime increased wages due to contract, additional full year of two corporals at a higher rate. Captain's overtime reflects wage increase, more realistic hours, we reduced court overtime. Uh, overtime training, slight change due to wages. And the major change there is return the professional training progression, which we deferred this year and you opted at your last meeting to re- to include in next year's budget. We reduced vehicle repair, anticipating cruiser replacement. We combined tire purchases into vehicle repair, my tires were called out as a special area. We just put them all under vehicle repair, and you'll see that in every place that had sort of tires as a special item. Uh, uniform. Uniform replacement increased per contract. Immunition requires replenishment. We reduced it this past year due to default budget. Replacement of half the tasers, as you voted on last time. Cruiser replacement, we have the two cruisers in there with one with that partial coming back from the detail fund. Approximately $53,000 attributable to wages and benefits in the union contract.
Just a note, although I talked about this a couple moments ago, is the revenue. You and I discussed this earlier in last week as to whether you show the monies coming from the detail fund as revenues?
Mm-hmm. I will prob, I will probably put those in as revenues.
Okay, that's all.
Right, and, and I'll tell you, I haven't delved too far into that. Between meetings with, you know, I've had conversations and been kicking around whether we were going to keep that, keep both vehicles in, move one around or anything else. So, you know, if we're, I will make the revenue numbers appropriate to show the inbound transfer and then gross appropriate, so that 27.5 will bump back up to, whatever I have in there will bump back up accordingly.
Understood.
Yep. Police support, dispatch wages per contract, and we restored dispatch coverage and overtime hours that were cut this year for default. Fire budget, chief's wage per contract. We reduce the expectation of number of calls. We reduce the training wage line. We've moved some of that to the seminars line as tuition, so it just was reclassing those dollars in a better place. No restoration of Saturday, Sunday coverage. Moved the tire purchase up to vehicle repair. We restored the call company and chief uniform allowance, two things that were deferred this year. Replacement of the thermal imaging camera, which I think we discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss that.
Okay.
I'm wondering whether it would make sense that we take that from the budget and put that as a warrant article, standalone warrant article. There's two sides to this. One, you can view it as it's a replacement good. I understand that, and it works. But the other, other side of this is that I think it can stand alone and similar to what we did two years ago when we replaced the defibrillators. We replaced the defibrillators, which already existed within the department, with a warrant article for the purchase of two brand-new defibrillators because there was a technology change over the 10 years or whatever the heck it was that we owned these things, which is similar to what we're seeing here. And I'm just wondering whether it would make sense that we move that into a separate standalone warrant article.
Thoughts? I mean, my, my two cents is that it's an asset, it's a device we use, it's important to the department, it should be part of the operating budget. It's a normal lifecycle change. I, I agree with you that we took that chance, we took that task last time and did it that way, and we, it was favorable. I have no doubt that it wouldn't be favorable again. It's just, we just, we're pushing the decisions that we're put in office for back. And it just seems like we're put here to make these decisions, and why shouldn't we make them? We're not buying something that new, we're buying something that's required in the department, that has to be there. I just, at some point in time, if we ask for it, so I have to go to warrant, I have 40,000 warrants just to answer the question for pencils.
Well, that's not the way I'm viewing it.
No, I know that's something, I get that, I just, I struggle with the, it's something we've already acceded, we've already been, you know, it's already been put into our, our care, and we're supposed to be taking care of these things. And taking care of it doesn't be this lifecycle, it's got to get replaced.
Isn't there something else from fire that we're already pushing off the warrant?
Yes.
That you told.
Truck, truck, vehicle.
Yeah.
The dilemma we have is, and this is where philosophically you're replacing what you're replacing. But if you go back and you look at the lesson from this past year, for, you know, reading the tea leaves from this past year's town meeting, the budget's defeated, the articles pass. So, what, what could potentially happen if that scenario played out with this budget? That camera gets thrown overboard where if you ask for it separately, it probably passes overwhelmingly, if we use this year as a model.
And that's, and that's my reasoning is that the chances of this being defeated, I think, are slim simply because people understand the need for it. It's a proven piece of equipment that's necessary for the fire department, and I think there's a good case to be made that this is something that saves lives.
So, why don't we take ammunition out of the police department and put it up there warrant? That's what we're doing, that's.
If you want to do that, that's fine.
No, I don't.
I mean.
I'm just saying, it's, people understand what bullets are needed for, but why not put it to warrant? My thing about the car tooth, the utility thing, I agree with that because it's a, it's a vehicle that's not directly related to fighting fires. It's more of a, I won't say it can be, but it's a thing that helped, help, we have enough vehicles, it's not replacing a fire truck, that kind of thing. That's why I kind of support that going to warrant, but.
Part of its need is also because it's, it had, there's an increased need there. It doesn't meet the load capacity that they're seeking.
Right.
It's also not an annual consumable. Yeah, I know people don't like to, some people don't like to hear this, cruisers are consumable, they're in your budget. Ammunitions are consumable. This camera is a once every eight to 10-year purchase. It's not a consumable. 12.
About 12,000.
12,000, yes.
I would leave it right in the budget and.
It's fine, let's go on to something else.
Even if the budget was defeated, I would probably find some money to buy it.
Not possible.
But my ability year after year is getting tougher and tougher.
Are we, does no, no one wants to make a motion to take it out or do anything different?
Well, I mean, let's look at it logically. You're against it, he's against it, Kevin's going to abstain. So, want me to tell you the vote right now?
One, two, three, one, two, one?
Yeah. Well, it won't even get that far because there'll be no second for the motion.
Oh, I would have seconded it.
Seconded it for discussion.
All right, we discussed it.
All right. Hydrants, potential small adjustment there with receipt of final rates from Penachuk. But I think those are, that's pretty much in the ballpark. Code enforcement is flat. Emergency management, full cost of code red. We've been paying half from prior year funds the past couple of years.
Just a question.
Yep.
That I have on this. Is there anything in there for simulation of emergency or for testing of our emergency systems?
We're still carrying, we're still carrying an encumbrance for that.
Okay. That's how we're supposed to do the test this year. Aren't we supposed to do it this year?
Yeah. Yeah.
We on target?
You're probably supposed to do it two years ago, too.
Yeah, I, yeah, the, the challenge, I mean, and, you know, the, the honest answer on that is when you look at that emergency management budget and your emergency management stipend is zero, and you have a part-time fire chief who's limited by the number of hours he can work, we, just reality is this is unfortunately what slips off the plan. So, you know, we have great intentions, but.
Okay, road agent?
Road agent. Restore a full amount of consulting engineering services. Road maintenance, equipment rental for roadside mowing, restore the road maintenance budget. Remove the catch basin program. Restored salt purchase, you voted on that last time. Gross appropriate, the increased highway block grant.
I have a question on this.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, earlier in the year, the road agent came to us with the suggestion that the town purchase a painter for being able to do some limited line striping, markings for stop bars and things like that. The information that I have is that the line striping equipment, we had a quote that was given to us June 11th. And the total cost was about $6,636.50. And that quote was good until the end of the year. There is also an additional cost of about $500 if we wanted to purchase paint. So, my question to this board is, I will suggest this as a warrant article or I will suggest this, that we put this in the budget. Now, utilizing the same logic that was given to me earlier, perhaps this should go into the budget.
It's a piece of equipment we're buying. I'm fine with it going to warrant.
Do we have a change now?
Isn't that new? No, we don't, we don't have it now, right.
So, how is it a change?
Go to warrant with it.
No, he, I say, I, I think Jack, I think the department showed the value, they could help us, we do have money in the budget.
Because we're currently spending money already to do this work, so it's not like.
We're hiring a contractor to do it, right.
Yeah, but it's probably, I think we had a conversation about that. It goes above me on the purchase of the equipment, right? You're going to be able to ride that little dune buggy around town and stripe everything?
This is for, in sections and stuff like that.
It's for stop bars.
That kind of thing.
Stop bars, crosswalks, parking lots, we would still be hiring somebody to do center lines and fog lines. We're not running behind this walk, we're not standing behind a walking piece of equip. Now, when we proposed this earlier this summer, we proposed it as a trade-off of the savings within the pavement striping line, a little bit of equipment line, because we're still going to have to spend $5,000 to $6,000 a year probably in center line, fog line. But not all of the money for crosswalks, striping the, and, and stop bars and those sort of things. It was, it was not exactly warmly received in the first proposal we made to the board. So, Jack and I still felt, felt it was a good idea. I don't like being told no over and over again by you guys, so that's why I only asked once. I still personally think it's a good idea, and I think Jack still thinks it's a good idea, but.
I question if this is a viable piece of equipment.
Why viable? What do you mean, it doesn't work?
Looks like a piece of junk.
Well, they all do look bad.
They all look like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a walk.
I'm sorry to say, but if I saw that out on the road, painting some lines, even a crossbar, I would probably laugh.
It's a wa, it's a walk behind machine. I mean, we had, we had demonstrations out here, and actually, it's, it, it does a pretty nice job. But yeah, I mean, it's, you know.
Looks like a pressure, a high pressure.
Yeah, it, it's not the fanciest of machines, but it does, it does the, it paints what you need.
Let's see how long it gets used. That looks, that looks along the lines of the mower that we bought to, to mow along a bike path that we now have to rent equipment for.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that, since you touched on it.
Well, it's got nothing to do with what the topic of discussion is.
Right, it doesn't. I'm, I'm fine with recommending to put it in the warrant list, and we can discuss it further in the warrant list.
Okay.
It's not in the budget today, it's not contained in there, so it's nothing to pull out.
Well, it is contained in the budget. It's contained as a purchase that we do.
Right, the contracting fees.
So, it's a replacement for the purchase that we're doing.
Then everything is.
There you go.
Now, let's, let's discuss it in the warrant. I think, I think it's got value as a warrant discussion. Any action, any action in this budget?
Well, if you're going to put it as a warrant, then I would say no.
Yeah, I would suggest putting it on warrant.
Okay.
I would suggest putting it to warrant with a, maybe better grade piece of equipment.
I can tell you that they make excellent equipment, and I have some of their equipment.
Well, I'd use that at my house, maybe.
Well, maybe we can come and paint some stripes.
If, if you'd like some, some stripes, we can come up with a good deal for you. It's, it's simple enough to operate that even I was able to paint parking lot stripes in a straight line out there.
There's a new career. All right, street lighting?
Street lighting is unchanged. Solid waste administration. Most of the changes are full year of what we've done this year with changing demolition disposal, freon, glass, and electronics being processed through the co-op with costs netted out of recycled material revenues. Health unchanged. Mosquito district contract change. Animal control, restored building maintenance to previous level. This year, we had to deal with an early 2014 issue that, in our revised budget. Health agencies unchanged. You know, we, and, and this is a point we haven't really discussed this time around. I've just assumed that we were doing the same thing as before. I've provided to you information about all the agencies that have asked for information, and if you look at the actual budget, they're all, all of the links, if you click the name, goes to their whole presentation. We've put an amount in a warrant article, and we've agreed to keep this child advocacy center, one.
In the budget.
In the budget because of its primary use in the police department. So, questions I have are, is that still the approach you want to take? No agencies in the budget, put everything out under a warrant article? Everybody good with that? Okay. Second thing, logistically, anybody mind if we move the child advocacy center over to the police department budget? So, I can discontinue carrying a separate department for just this one item?
I don't have any.
I have no issue.
I don't see, the budget committee may have only concern because it's moving from one department to the other, but I don't see any reason why not. Just put it under the legal court fee.
Right, we'll put it, it'll be in the 300 somewhere under professional services.
Any other additions? It's an accounting thing, it's all.
That's an accounting thing, but yeah, so this gives you apples to apples. I'll move it over then if everybody's okay with it. Okay. Welfare unchanged.
Just a question on welfare. What's the tally right now as far as, how much are we actually spending every year?
Hold on a sec, I can tell you where we are year-to-date. Maybe.
I'm asking this to see if it's, if it's enough funding, that's all.
It's, it's, for now, it's enough funding, but, you know, it's.
It's always too much.
It is.
You know that.
You know, the, the, the problem is you can go through it all very quickly depending on what kind of situation comes through the door. Your, your spending on welfare is significantly less than others. We're actually in pretty good shape so far this year. We're, we've spent about 35% of that budget.
Give me a number.
What's a $20 budget?
Yeah, we've spent about $7,000. We've spent about $7,000 so far.
Could say the number, would you?
Yeah, we've spent about $7,000.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, I mean, but the, yeah, we're now.
We're into that seasonally.
Right, seasonally, it, I would expect it would pick up, so.
All right, parks and rec?
Parks and rec. Flat. Library. Flat. Patriotic purposes unchanged.
Stop for a second.
Yes.
Go park and rec again for a second. Steve, is there anything that parks and recs haven't put in their budget that they should be considering putting in the budget?
Parks and recs haven't even gone through their budget yet.
Okay, so this is still, this is still your pass with their.
This is my pass with their, with their chair. Their chair saying, go ahead.
Committee hasn't actually reviewed it itself.
We haven't had a full meeting. The last meeting we had came to Quorum at about 5:00 past 8 from a 7:30 meeting. And that's the first meeting they've had in probably a month, month and a half.
I'm not sure where you're headed with this, but my intention, I think we need to vote this tonight. And unfortunately, if they haven't had a meeting.
It's our budget at this point.
Yeah.
No, I, I guess I was, I was really asking about, you know, the SAB bill, SAB mill issues and all that. Is there any, there's nothing in here for that, and maybe it goes to warrant instead.
If they were going to go for camera system or something like that, that's, that was my.
Have to go to warrant, it's a new item.
Yeah, no.
That was my.
No, you're right. Logically, you're right.
Intention was to guide them in that direction.
Trust me, I'll pound that all night.
I know you are.
All right, cool, move on.
Wait a second, there was once a camera bot.
Oh, then, okay, then, then it's good to go as, in the budget.
All right, library, you already said patriotic purposes.
Okay, unchanged, conservation, flat.
I have a question on conservation. And this is a question that I posed to Mr. Hoke, and Mr. Hoke said that there was, in his opinion, some legal concerns about that. But last year, the town voted to construct the conservation fund as required under RSA. And in the RSA, it clearly says that any purpose contained within the chapter of conservation, which means the whole purpose of conservation and everything else, can be taken from that fund. So, my question is, why can't we zero this out and have the conservation commission utilize the conservation fund that they have to provide for their purposes?
And the response that I had was I took a narrower view of it like I did in this current year's budget and read, read that law as their appropriation spending where it's necessary to acquire, maintain, improve, protect, or limit the future use of or otherwise conserve and properly utilize open spaces, other land, water areas within their city or town. It's a quote from the law. So, my view on that was I pulled property management out and said that goes to the fund. So, the actual kind of care and maintenance of their actual property. And then, I wasn't as immediately comfortable with the more expansive view of saying, training, fishing derby, those sort of things could be charged to the fund.
Do you agree that it says in the law, and I'll find it if you want, that under RSA thirty-six, what is it, colon A, section five?
Thirty-six, yep.
Roman numeral one?
We will, we disagree.
Basically, it says that any purpose contained within that chapter can be spent from that fund.
We disagree on the allowable purposes. Now, that said, two things that further came out of that then were, one, we were talking about, you know, like fourteen hundred hours, so I was going to spend at least ten percent of that getting a legal opinion to clarify it, which seemed to be penny wise and pound foolish. And the second concern I had was a concern about, and you saw a little indicator of that view tonight, of the Conservation Commission has a preference of retaining at least some toehold in the operating budget, and you saw the concern that John brought forward tonight about legal fees versus, from the fund versus the operating budget. My sense was, there was, you know, the path of least resistance was splitting the difference, which is what I did in this year's budget, and that's all I carried over for next year. If you want to go a different route, you can certainly, you certainly have that prerogative to go a different route. My guess is, if you choose to go a different route, you may have public input and, from the Conservation Commission, expressing a concern at your next meeting.
Was the Conservation Commission okay with what you've done so far?
Grudgingly.
So.
Grudgingly, I'm not sure the balance of the commission was happy with the property management piece going, but they grudgingly accepted a little bit of my badgering at the moment for that.
It says here that a town or city having established a Conservation Commission as authorized in RSA thirty-six, colon two, may appropriate monies as deemed necessary for the purposes of this chapter. Then it goes on to say that monies expended from said fund by the Conservation Commission for the purpose, okay, and this is from the Conservation Commission Fund, for the purposes of this chapter, without further approval of town meeting. So, they can spend for any purposes of the whole Conservation Commission chapter, without further approval of town meeting. To me, that's a clear indication that, that they could be self-funded.
Okay, what's the board's desire or wish? Motion? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen zero out the Conservation Commission budget line, and have that basically replaced with self-funding through the Conservation Commission Fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion or discussion?
Is, is there a point that the town should be responsible for providing them their paperwork, documentation, any of that type of stuff, in your opinion?
In my opinion, it can be purchased through that, that fund. The, it's very clear on the state statute, it says that, you know, any purposes of this chapter, and that chapter goes all the way through Conservation Commission, methods of adoption, all the way to Commissioner of Resource and Economic Development.
Other discussion?
I would like a little more time to look through this. Is there a way we could put this, this piece off until the next meeting, or do you need this now?
We have to prove it tonight.
Pick, pick a, pick a direction, prove it now and re, we're talking fourteen hundred hours in a five-point-one-million-dollar budget, so, I think if it is, if it is important for the board to come back and put it in or take it out at a future meeting, we'll be, we can have that conversation with the Budget Committee. We're talking, we're talking fourteen hundred hours, plus or minus here.
I'll make a motion then that we table a discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second, but we already had a motion and second on the table.
Sorry, I didn't say, so, I would just.
But you can table anytime you want.
So, just table it.
I'll, I mean, Steve wants some more information, more time, we got to do something tonight, so.
Okay, all those in favor, table in the discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion's been, this discussion's tabled, so we'll leave the fourteen-eighty there, and we'll come back and talk about it later.
Right now, just so you know, I have that scheduled for discussion at the Budget Committee on the thirtieth.
Of October?
Of October, so.
So, you have one more meeting between?
There's, there's time.
Okay.
And again, this is a fourteen-hundred-hour item, I think if we push it out one or more weeks further with the Budget Committee, we can, we'll probably be okay.
You can put it on the next meeting for all I'm concerned, I just wanted to read through.
Yep.
Yeah, it will be.
That's fair.
Make sure that I completely understand it before I cast a vote, which after I read through it more carefully may have what I had wanted to make.
What's on the, what's there, on the thirtieth, what topics are you discussing with the Budget Committee?
Oh, thanks, now that I've closed it. Hold on.
Excuse me.
Thirtieth is planning zoning general government buildings, cemeteries, ambulance, fire, code enforcement, emergency management, health, conservation.
Cool, all right, thank you.
I seriously doubt they're going to get through that all day.
They won't get through that.
That's what they did last year.
Stating my opinion.
This is, this is the schedule that.
They got through it, but they had a lot of questions on the vote day, so.
This is the schedule that they, that we used last year, and.
We have to school down the two minutes.
Exactly. Debt?
Debt is unchanged.
I think we should raise up to two dollars.
All right, so we've been through everything, there was no major changes at all.
Mr. Hoke is, sorry, is, is that number correct, down below the five-point-two-four-one-oh-five-four million?
Yes, five million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, fifty-four dollars.
So, I'll make a motion, the Board of Selectmen approves as a two thousand and fifteen budget, five million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, fifty-four dollars, as enumerated in the budget review done by Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion or discussion? I just, I'll just say thank you to Jason and all the town, all the department heads for all the effort, and we'll go from there. There nothing else, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries four-zero-zero.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to move that budget on to the Budget Committee.
One second. Motion made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries four-zero-zero.
Now, is this site going to be opened up for Budget Committee access, or?
It will, this, this spreadsheet will not be open per se, the, the, the individual pages are published to them, so that's what I will be doing, you actually have that, you have that too, but they will be, I will be publishing them as I did last year, department by department.
It's the budget portal, right?
Yeah.
That second link you have on the page?
Yeah, except I need to get two thousand and fifteen built.
So, just so I understand, you don't open up the whole budget, you just open up the ones that they're going to review?
No, no, I, I give them each, I, I publish them sheet by, department sheet by department sheet, so you guys have access to the whole spreadsheet, all at once. What I give them is the.
Tab by tab.
I, I give them department by department.
Whatever.
It's all there, they have, they have access to all of the information.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for taking this approach this year, I think your department heads and I appreciate not running through the extended marathon.
You'll get a ton more done now with all your free time.
With all of my free time.
There goes your, your nights. All right, next on the agenda, I think that was it, right? Yeah, there was no, nothing to move consent, and no other business, although, nope, we're all set, I think that's it.
We can talk more if you want.
No, no, not at all.
How's your day going?
That's it, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion.
No, I'm not. Do I have a second? Seconded, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries four-zero-zero. The Board of Selectmen's next meeting will be October twenty-seventh, six o'clock here, so, have a great week.
Just one last thing, I will be out of town all next week, and I sent you guys an email on that, so I will not be, actually be out of country, but that's another issue.
You need anything covered from this side, no?
Nope, everything should be good.
Good enough. All right, folks, have a great evening, and thank you very much.